Okay, it's six o'clock. This will be a meeting of the Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees. Roll call, please.
Richard?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
David?
Here.
Okay, item two, report from Hennessy United Board. I missed the last meeting, I think. Consider approval of consent agenda minutes of January meetings. Approval claims as follows: January purchase orders 3,468 on nine. February purchase orders 21,522 fourteen. February restricted sales tax fund 23,894 eight. February library funds six dollars and eighty-one cents. February restricted mailing funds ninety-six dollars and thirty-two cents. And accept the following reports, Treasury, Library, and Police. Any questions or any additions to the consent agenda? If saying not that they'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda? Second, roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Item four, citizens' comments. White citizenry, citizenry tonight? Okay. Town administrators' report, Tiffany.
It's pretty much all done and reported. You have any questions?
Okay. You really are trying to get out, aren't you?
One question I had, Ed, you said that there was, what is it, the RO is just done, but you said there was some other thing that we needed to take care of.
Yeah, they did a punch list of seven things that still have to be repaired, that they found that they need to make either changes on settings or things like that. But other than that, it's operational.
The Talon Group are the ones that found those punch items?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
That's our engineer, because we did a walkthrough the other day. And so they go through and they check everything.
And the people that didn't work is, what's the name of the company?
Worth Hydrocam.
Worth Hydrocam, yeah. They're the ones that's got to fix it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Did they end up using any of those old parts like they had requested to be able to, to install in the system to where they could get it up and running? Or is everything new?
Everything's new.
Very good, I'm happy. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Item six, other scheduled business. Discuss, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. Item A is discussion with possible action to acknowledge the lockbox arrangement requested by Howdy Truck Stop LLC for the quarterly payments. Tiffany, you want to explain that?
David and his banker have made an arrangement because he did, they did allocate him more money because of him putting in the water and sewer lines. And so the bank has him, he signed off on it, and we need to sign off it that we're going to acknowledge to send those quarterly payments to that lockbox.
Okay.
And the attorney, he's went through it all and he said that that would be fine.
Are they going to, who is going to provide the town with the monthly sales tax statements? Will those come from the Tax Commission?
They'll come from him.
Okay.
And then we'll verify them with the Tax Commission.
Okay.
Like, he'll give us stuff too. And then our, we'll base it on, because we get a report showing who paid him so much.
But what you give back, what we give back is the town doesn't show individual business.
Yes, it does.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, there's confidential reports that it does.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
There is.
Okay. I thought it was just grouped like these.
There is a report that does that, and there's also a report that does individual businesses.
Oh, okay.
So is this a physical thing or an online thing, a lockbox?
It's where we mail it. It's in this agreement. It gives us instructions on where, where to mail it, the check, the quarterly check to, gets to a lockbox.
Is that kind of like an escrow account, kind of a thing?
I don't know how they-
No, it just goes into their bank account without him getting a physical check.
No, he's gonna, he's gonna get a physical check.
But I mean, the lockbox.
The bank is gonna get the financials.
How should the motion sound? I don't know exactly.
Well, I mean, you can just say that they, I mean, that you acknowledge, or, because the mayor is gonna have to sign, is gonna have to sign this.
I'd say just to approve the lockbox agreement with Howdy Truck Stop LLC. Okay. Motion to acknowledge the lockbox arrangement requested by Howdy Truck Stop for quarterly payments. Second, roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item B is discussion with possible action to approve the interlocal agreement with Kingfisher County to house Hennessy.
Hey, since we will be eventually closing down the, the place, you know, the dispatch center, then we won't be able to have a ten-day hold anymore. And so we will need to reinstitute our interlocal agreement with the Kingfisher County Sheriff's on this. And this was approved by our attorney, too.
Have they been holding our prisoners?
No. We've had a ten-day hold where if on our charges that we want to, to arrest somebody, then they can go into our ten-day hold.
They have done it before, though, years past, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I can remember my days as a dispatcher. We had prisoners in Kingfisher County, sure did. That was a couple of years ago.
So we'll just pay the same rate we had been paying?
It is, it is pretty much the same rate as what we were paying. It's like forty-eight dollars a day if we arrest somebody on our charges. Now, if we file district charges, then we don't pay that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Kingfisher County Sheriff's Department to hold Town of Hennessy inmates.
Second.
Roll call.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Cliff?
Also, Aaron would be here with all of this stuff, but he just had knee surgery last week, so...
Oh, he finally got it?
Yes. He's gonna be, he's non-weight bearing for like six weeks, so...
Okay. Item C is discussion with possible action to approve signage for Discover Hennessy
This is, let me make sure this is working, hold on. This is a, a deal that we, I've been working on for a long time. It is now functioning. And now I need a budget to, I guess actually initiate it. So here's the deal, and the point of, of this whole thing, is that Hennessy is a working town. Visitors really don't have any single, big single reason to come here, other than maybe the quilt shop. We don't have like a pioneer woman or a chip and Joanna to draw attention to us, so until one of you guys becomes famous, we have to rely, we have to capitalize on our events that we already have, like the car show, wine festival, and several others that are in the works. So bring that out, Angie, that sign, right there, please. My lovely assistant will bring the sign out here in a minute. So that's why we started this partnership with the Town of Hennessy. There are a lot of opportunities that happen in this town that we don't take advantage of. Say, for example, many of the sporting events, the tournaments, field and track, the new field and track is gonna have a big attraction, large choir performances where literally hundreds and hundreds of people come to our town, but we have no way to interact with them or attract them to Main Street because they're scattered around, or they're, I call them the zombie walkers, walking up and down Main Street and don't know where to go. So we created the Welcome to Hennessy ticket and QR code system. And the tickets in your hands, I'll explain what those are in a minute. So the point of this is, let me just get my notebook in here. So these signs are a big part of it. So there'll be at least one of these signs on both sides of the business district, up and down Main Street. They'll be in all the parks in town, they'll be at all the athletic fields at the school, the Eagle Events Center, the hotel, and anywhere else I can find a place to stick them, okay? In town, they'll be mounted to the actual light poles. So they'll be like at eye height, so as you walk around, you're seeing the-
The existing streetlight poles?
Yeah. Is that okay?
Not with me, but I'm not the only one out here.
Okay, well, we'll find a place to put them. But that's what they're designed for, to be present on Main Street, so people will see them and can interact with them. And then another part of this, the tickets themselves, the point of the tickets are that when you come to an event, we're gonna instruct the people that are handing out tickets or interacting with people, that everybody gets one of those. So when you come to, say, a football game as a visitor and you buy a ticket, you get one of those, okay? When you go to the Eagle Events Center and you buy a ticket to go in, you'll get one of those. And then, like, say during the car show, as the cars are coming into town, every car that comes in will get one of those tickets. And then they'll also be in all the businesses. You know, if someone is in there shopping for something, they see that, then they know who interacted with the rest of the town.
Can we turn that sign towards the camera so the people in Hennessy can see what we're talking about?
Yeah, we'll put it in there.
So that they can see.
Yeah. And then there'll also be some decals that will be available for the business owners to put on their glass windows or, you know, on their countertop or wherever, wherever we can get them. And then it'll be our job to coordinate with the softball fields, with like all the tournaments, the events, Eagle Events Center, to know when those are coming, to let the businesses know if they decide they want to be open, you know, to take advantage of this, okay? So... This is what I'm asking you guys for tonight.
Did they know the QR code goes to the website?
Yes, let's, let's show them how that works. So when you shoot that with your phone or any, any digital device, it goes here, okay? And then, say you decide you want to eat, you click on the eat button. And here are all the restaurants in town. And when you, in a visual of what each restaurant has, when you click on it, it'll take you to Rooster's actual website where you can see their current menu, their hours of operation, and things like that, okay? So all the restaurants in town will be on there. And then the same with... So the same with shop and so on. So when you go to shop, it'll show all the stores that we have in town and the things they offer. Need a faster internet connection.
So they all lead to whether their website or their Facebook?
Oh, they're not wanting to log in because it goes to Facebook. But either way, they all go to their website or their Facebook page for additional information. So did I get everybody to leave? I think I stopped in the...
Didn't stop.
Sorry, I got distracted.
Squirrel.
And stay not only has our hotel, but it also has like Richard's B&amp;B, it has the RV parks.
Can you see that picture?
All of those, you know, all of the options, not just the hotel.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
You got sidetracked again.
Squirrel, squirrel moment.
With the phone numbers and address.
All right, so any questions on how this works or the purpose of it? Okay, so what I'm proposing tonight is to purchase these items. So it'll be thirty signs, just like that, that's, that's the actual sign. Fifteen pole brackets to mount them somewhere, maybe other than street pole. Six, ten six-foot poles to put, mount them where there isn't a place to mount them, like in the parks and things like that. Seventy-five decals that would be available for businesses to put wherever we can get this thing in front of people. And then five thousand of those tickets. They'll, they'll, they'll actually look better than that. I printed those myself, but they'll be like a glossy cardstock. And then the miscellaneouses like concrete, bolts, anything I need to help erect this stuff and get them up to where people can interact with them. Any questions on this?
So is this gonna be on the school, the town's website, then?
No. It's, it's on the All About Hennessy website because we're getting fifteen or twenty thousand hits like a week here. And the web, the town website will be linked to this. There'll be a similar link like this one on the town website. So it's just housed here because this is where everything commerce already is.
So if they go to the town website, they can still get to this?
It'll, it'll still go to the same place, yeah.
Do you say you had twenty thousand hits a month on All About Hennessy?
On just the website. That's not Facebook or YouTube or...
That's good exposure.
Yeah.
That's real good exposure.
Yeah.
Jack, I need another set of these, please. I got another card.
Oh, more cards? Yes, somewhere. Do you have more cards?
Trying to make sure Harold gets all the paperwork for tonight. Thank you, sir.
Bert, I want your objection to putting a sign on the streetlights.
I just, I think our, when those were put in, they're just such an attractive antique-looking type lamp that I'm just afraid it might detract from that. If they could be put maybe on a standalone pole or something? I'm not, I'm not saying I don't like the idea.
No, I get it. I get it.
But I would think a standalone pole up and down Main Street would be pretty... Not very attractive.
The hard part with a standalone pole, and I might be wrong, is now we're talking with ODOT because we've got to cut the sidewalk to, you know, put in the concrete and all this other junk, where I envision them on, on the ends of all the blocks, you know, not on every single light pole. But the other towns that I have seen, they're on light poles. And that's why I tried to make it look like the sign, all, all the stuff, you know-
Look at New Kids. Oklahoma, you can see them are actually on the, I think, on the streetlight pole, like the traffic light.
The traffic light pole.
Well, have you seen the streetlights like we have downtown that they have in the red bluff edition? Those street signs down there hanging from a really ornate little right-angle sign that you can, and they don't look bad, but they're made to fit on those, they have a bracket-
I didn't think that would look, because I was just envisioning these just grouped to the pole.
Yeah. Oh, no, well, there'll be a bracket, a nice bracket that holds them so they don't flop around or anything, but, and we can talk about where they go. But I, I think it's critically important that there's at least one in every block of the whole business district, however we mount them. Now, this proposed amount I have here is for the rings, you know, that go around the pole that secure them.
Well, that's what I was saying on those, you know, how they're, they're not round. They have little concave grooves. And I think we got them from Ted Prince, you know, and he put up there in that subdivision because they didn't want, you know, hose clamps around them.
Sure.
And they, they looked real good.
Okay. Well, that's where these are coming from. But I can talk with him about a better way of mounting them or where to mount them. I honestly just thought we'd put them on poles. But I agree with-
Well, I, no, they look like, because I, I remember now what you're talking about up there.
I'll have a look at that.
I think that would look fine. I think that would look fine. I'd just-
And, and, and now I'm thinking of it, Bert, we wouldn't have to, we could, they could be mounted with a foot. We would have to cut, we wouldn't have to dig up concrete, we could mount it.
Bolt down a-
That's a big scary thing.
So, I mean, you take this, this is like a flag. This is for flags.
Flag mount.
But you put something decorative like this.
Right.
And I don't think that it would take away the flags.
I like that.
No, I like it. But that's what, those brackets out there, they're, they're sort of around here, they're actually fitted to the-
They're made to fit the pole.
They're made to fit a pole.
Yes, they are.
Oh, cool.
I would, I would say that there's probably a bracket for the poles we have.
I think these were-
Are nice like that.
Because we got the, we got, well, we got one, I think, to try to see if we liked them. And then, but this is it.
Well, that, yeah.
But that looks more expensive than what he has.
Yeah, I'm sure that's more than, these were like twenty-five dollars each, where that's, I'm sure.
That's probably more than that. Now, I don't use QR codes. I guess I better learn. But is that something that's gonna have to be kind of at eye level for them to-
Yeah, it, it probably needs to be around six feet-ish.
Okay.
Yeah, no matter where they-
So they probably need to protrude back toward the sidewalk and then out over-
Correct, yeah, they would be, as you're walking on the sidewalk, they're right here, not on the street side.
Right.
Sorry, I can get that one from right here.
Can you really?
Yeah.
Well, they put them on billboards.
Wow.
I mean, that's, it doesn't take a lot to hit them.
We did the one in Tulsa, and it was on the top of a building.
Yeah.
I mean, it was like eight ways away up at the top of the building, we were across the street.
The phones, phones now-
So you could put them up where it's not, people aren't gonna be bumped up ahead.
Yes.
Yeah, they want nobody to walk in.
Yeah, because all you can do is just zoom in with your camera to get closer and you'll get it.
So on, on Main Street, they probably should be above head height, just a little, so they're not banging heads, but we can, we can put them anywhere, you know, we decide, we can practice and see what works, but...
And could they be, have you, well, you probably haven't yet, I assume, but I was gonna say talk to the school to see, would they be like wall-mounted in the dome?
Yeah, I envisioned it mount, I envisioned maybe two of them in the dome, one, maybe one on a pedestal near the ticket counter.
Right.
That could be put away or whatever, and then one hard-mounted inside somewhere.
Okay, now my next question. If we've got large tournaments and things going on on the weekends, I love this idea. Can we get the restaurants to stay open?
Everybody we've talked to, I did this presentation Monday at our networking event.
And I missed that.
And I'll never let you, let it back down. But it, it was a raving success. All of our, most of our restaurant owners were there, a lot of our business owners were there, and they just absolutely loved it. So I think we've got a new generation of business owners that are coming up. And the younger, the youngins are much more into, I'll work some extra hours to make extra money kind of thing. And they love the technology part of this thing. So I really think it's, I will, I will mention this, Bert, that this was, this was working like ten years ago, but it was hard to use. You needed an app, and your phone didn't know what to do with it. Now, any phone pointed at that will just immediately go-
So I could just shoot that?
Yeah, point your phone at it, and it'll say you want to go there. Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm, most of what I'm seeing on, on the cost, Jack, appear to be one-time expenses.
Yes.
Except these.
Correct. Yeah, we'll have to keep redoing those. Now, Harold tells me that this is a five-to-six-year decal, so especially the sun side, we'll probably have to replace these every once in a while.
Sure.
You know, they'll bleach out. But for now, I think these are, they're gonna look really nice. And, and we can place them where the sun's not beating on them, you know, real hard to get some longevity out of them.
Tiffany, this is an unfair question. That arm that you brought out, you kind of got a wild guess how much that cost?
I don't know, because I've, we've had it in there since Bert is with work in here, so I don't know.
Okay. I probably need to reach out to ask Harold, because he's got, he had a whole book of things to attach these with. So I would need to look at kind of what you were talking about and see how we can mount them on a street pole, but where they look like they belong there. And it's, it's not some duct tape thing.
Right, it really looked good, because-
My thoughts, my thoughts were that if nothing else, we get black fixtures, you know, so they're not like a shiny hose clamp, a loom, and they're, they're all black.
Then the same color as the pole, they're black.
Yeah, yeah. So if, if the brackets you're talking about are too costly, ineffective, we can-
I didn't think they were that high, because, you know, there were no street signs out there, so rather than get the regular corner ones, we went with buying them for those poles. And they really, it makes it look pretty fancy.
Looks like they belong there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be good.
And I think having these out will bring more attention to the ones that we already have out.
Well, I was, you know me, I've always said we need a mark key somewhere, you know, that tells people what to do. This is like having forty of them.
Well, the beauty of this is, in, in a minute, Angie can jump in there and tell this thing to do anything you want.
Notice he said Angie.
We have it on tape. During the car show, stop me if I hold the wrong way, but during the car show, there'll be an interactive map on here.
Yes.
Where you can tell where everything is. So I'm standing here, this is where these things are. So she did it last year, but it wasn't publicized properly, where now, now we have the ability to do that.
We also put buttons on all the helpers with that QR code, so that anyone walking around with the vest and the button, they could shoot that QR code and see where all the events were.
Oh, wow, that's really good.
And this will also be included on any additional marketing materials. If we end up making a brochure or anything, this would be, now, don't, don't hurt me, Aaron's not here, but I would love to make, I would love to make a little one of these that goes on the back of the police cars. And I've seen that in a lot of communities, they have something like that on the, it's just little, this big, but there's a blank spot, I already looked, there's a blank spot on the back door of the Trump side of the police cars that, so...
And people these days will scan it just to see exactly what it is.
Well, yeah, kids do that all the time, just shooting QR codes, yeah.
Can we just put that on the water tower?
Well, that's not planned. You could, yeah, I mean, absolutely, because it'll, it'll shoot that far.
Wow.
Bert, you'll put it on your purse.
Yeah.
Put it on the hood. Well, I think, I think that sign is a beautiful product that fits in with our existing street signs that Tiffany got.
It's all about branding.
And it's branding, and to me, to put that sign on a, on our light poles, I think enhances both. I think it'd both be a beautiful result. And I'm skeptical of sticking a pole in the ground and sticking this on it. It, to me, it cheapens it.
Well, I think I can, I can work with, I'm glad you brought that up, because I, I think we can work to make this look like it belongs on the light poles, you know, the proper fixture, so...
Is he doing it?
I shake too bad. Yeah, I got it.
Tiffany, do we have this, we have it, we have a tourism bucket in our, in our, in our funds, is that correct? Do we have this cash in that tourism bucket?
There is. We would probably have to do a budget amendment because it goes over what the budget was for the year, but there is money in there.
The hotel's not doing like it used to, so, you know, I want to be careful with that budget because, you know, these kind of programs come out of that, so...
Yeah.
But I'm not the money person, you guys can figure that part out, but-
There is money there.
I make a motion to approve the signs for Discover Hennessy Campaign.
Second.
Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes, but I'm confused.
Are we gonna put these signs on a pole, or are we gonna put them on the streetlight?
I'm gonna try to put them on the street poles.
Street lights.
Streetlight poles.
And Richard, the way, you know, from what Frank and Jack were talking about, I think would be fine. I just didn't want to see them, just which-
Drill two holes.
Be little of it, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I want clarification.
But, yeah. But, yeah, no, I think, I think that would be pretty classic looking, actually.
Before we move on, I just wanna address one more little quick thing, that I had a thirty-minute-plus presentation about my whole Discover Hennessy program for the planning meeting that got postponed. And Tiffany and I were talking that it might be best to just hold a special meeting, so I can bring you all really up to date, because we've been doing an enormous amount of work in the background. And I have lots of big things I wanna talk with you guys about, but it's, I don't think it's the time for a normal meeting. We need to maybe do a little quick special meeting.
Sure.
In forty-five minutes, I could bring you all up to date.
Maybe that presentation could be made to the general public of people of Hennessy that, you know, that now they're running a business that didn't go to your meeting. But as a private citizen, we'd like to see this, so we could invite...
Yeah, we'll just push the word out when the special meeting is and what the meeting is about, and maybe we could get somebody to come.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That's marvelous, Jeff, thank you.
Nice for your work, we really appreciate it.
This has really brought Hennessy to the forefront, I think.
Okay, item D, discussion with possible actions to approve severance pay for dispatchers that are being displaced by the dispatch center move.
Okay, so it looks like they will be moving the radios over in the next, well, not this week, of course, but a week or two. And so once they do that, then we will no longer be dispatching. I mean, as soon as they come and they do the radios, then it's gonna automatically, that day, transferred to Kingfish County. So I have decided that there's, I don't know how to, we need to do something for them, for the ones that are displaced. And I think that anywhere from three to six months severance would be great for them, to include their salary and their benefits. They've worked for us, they've been good to us, and we need to do something for them. Even if you guys wanna do more or what you wanna do, but I think we need to do something.
I agree.
And I know they're in a lull and don't know what's gonna happen. And so I really think that to give them assurance that we do care for them and we do want what's best for them, but, you know, that the town had to make this move and...
Okay, it's, it's okay for us to have open discussion on this right here, right now.
As long as we don't name individual employees.
As long as we don't name any person.
Correct.
Okay, so we can talk about what you sent out to us before the meeting.
It named individuals.
Yeah.
So we can't name individuals.
I wanna talk about, I wanna talk about dollar figures.
Okay.
And I, when I say, I want, I wanna talk about numbers of employees, not names.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, so I read that several times, and, and I tried to digest it the best I could. Here's my thoughts on it, okay? And I'm, you know, I may not be right, I may not be wrong, I don't know. I agree with what you're saying, we need to do something for those people. There's only two of them, right?
At this time, that's what I'm, yes.
Okay, yeah, so...
There would be two employees no longer working with us.
Right. So three to six months. There was a dollar figure that you put out, it was three thousand something, I can't remember the exact amount. Is that, is that...
It would be, it would be around fifty-eight, fifty-eight hundred dollars a month.
For each one of the two individuals?
No, that would be total for two employees.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted.
That includes benefits and salaries.
Okay, I see what you're saying. I, here's my deal, I'm just gonna throw it out, you guys can tell me what you think. I cannot support that for six months. I can support it for three.
That's why, to me, with three, and we're probably looking like next week, the week after, if we get rid of dispatch, then we're gonna have to figure out, you know, clean up the dispatch area and different things. So I think that they could probably work still, you know, a couple more weeks. So we're talking at least until the beginning of March, middle of March. We're budgeted till the end of June. So to me, that would give three and a half, four months.
Together to the end of June, to the fiscal year.
One more question from me, legal review?
Legal review?
Did you get the lawyer to look at it?
He, he's calling me back on Monday.
Okay, so, okay, so he's already chewing on it like, okay.
Yeah.
All right. To be honest with you, I was gonna, I was gonna ask for the legal review before we vote on it. You guys want, I mean, I'm asking, Bert, I guess I'm asking you, we could vote on it pending the legal review. You know, I'm, I'm good with that. I'm not gonna say I'm not gonna, you know, I'm gonna wanna vote on it without the legal review. But man, I tell you, I've been reading, you know, the state laws on, on our, on our payroll stuff. They're extremely stiff, so I'm a little gun-shy on it, is what I'm saying. But I think, I think what you've said and what you're asking for is reasonable at the three-month mark. And that's what I agree with. Okay, I'll hush. Legal review pending. Thank you, ma'am.
I, I definitely agree that we need to do something. I, our dispatchers have known that we've been talking about this. Many employees that have left have been looking for other jobs. And they have been loyal to us, and I appreciate that loyalty and feel like that... I, I feel like going to the end of the fiscal year is reasonable, because it's already budgeted for it. And that would basically give three months. I mean, if they work through the month of March, April, May, and June, it would be your three months severance, so... I, I agree that it should be done in the...
I agree. I think that a lot of people would have left and not, you know, oh, I gotta go find another job.
Yeah, I gotta go find something, then I'm out the door.
Yeah, so... We have real good town people, and this will ensure the town people that we have, too, that we, we still try to take care of our own. We don't just throw them away and just treat them as just a number or something, so I, I like Lisa to do that.
So what's the amount through June the thirtieth? Or I guess you don't know, because you don't know when you're gonna have everything set up. So approximately, what's it gonna be, I guess, each month?
It'll be approximately fifty-eight hundred dollars a month for two employees. Fifty-eight hundred dollars a month for two employees.
I make a motion to approve the dispatchers having, let me see, severance pay after approved by the town attorney.
And we can bring it back for you guys to vote on, you know, the actual, I mean, stuff. It's just, I need some reassurance for these, for some individuals that if they are displaced, then we're not just gonna say, tomorrow's your last day.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? I just think that they need some type of assurance that they are gonna get something.
How about approval of severance pay upon the attorney? The better, better wording?
Probably may need to say to include salary and benefits through June thirtieth of 2023, pending approval of the town attorney.
For displaced dispatchers?
Yeah, for displaced dispatchers.
A motion to approve salary and benefits for the displacement of the dispatchers for the fiscal year and in June, upon attorney's approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, any new business? Citizens comments? Councilperson's reports?
Let me back up here if you're unbound, I have one quick question from a neighbor. You're talking about repairing that street that's east-west, north of my house. I forgot what street that is, is it Nebraska or something? You're talking about resurfacing, goes toward the school, maybe it's Iowa.
I think Iowa's on the side of the school. Is Iowa, Kansas, Nebraska?
Maybe, maybe it's the east-west street.
Nebraska.
You know, that's, it, when it rains, it's just a swimming pool. Well, today I was going down Cimarron, I guess it is, it's the one closer that goes north-south, where the, I call them the flat-top apartments, they're right through there. It is a swimming pool right now, too. And there's a drainage ditch there, but the, the water can't get to the drainage ditch.
Cherokee?
Yeah, Cherokee, that's...
Yeah, Cherokee, because I, I went through that this morning, and I wondered if, if something was backed up or what, because I noticed, and it's never like that before.
It's, it, well, it has been, but not this bad, right. It's right there where the apartments on one side and the flat-top.
I literally imagine how the water suddenly leaves in some type of drainage, because...
So if you, if you go, you know, where the drainage is on Cheyenne, and it goes through that, between those yards and then next to those apartments, it's even flooded, like it was even really full coming off of Cheyenne towards Cherokee.
I think there's a concrete drainage.
Through there.
It wasn't getting into the ditch.
It's not getting into it.
No, like, to me, it looked like it was backed up on that concrete.
Yes.
From Cheyenne to Cherokee, through those houses.
Okay.
I bet you there's some, something coming.
Yeah.
Can you have them check that out, please? Okay, councilperson reports, Dave, you got anything?
Nothing, sir.
I don't have anything, kudos to the water department getting the big... I, I wasn't there to see it in person, but saw the pictures of the geyser that, that was the biggest water leak I think I've ever seen in Hennessy, so kudos to them. They got it done pretty quickly.
And the grid work was able to get there and help out, because I was told that ours, equipment would not be able to reach down there far enough and, and dig it out.
Not only that, once you get, once you get past a certain depth, then you've got to have the box to include, you know, to make sure that nothing falls in.
Safety issue.
It's a safety thing, and as soon as we got down to a certain level, I said, you guys gotta call somebody to have it done, because it's too much liability.
Yeah. Got anything, Cliff?
No, sir.
Richard, got anything?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Meeting of the Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees, February ninth. Roll call, please.
Richard?
Here.
Cliff?
Yes.
Eric?
Bert?
Here.
Harold? David?
Here.
Consider approval of consent agenda, minutes of meeting. Approval claims as follows, January purchase orders, four thousand four sixty-five oh six. February purchase orders, a hundred six thousand eight thirteen fifty-nine. January, February meter deposit refunds, six hundred and eighty dollars, and the treasury report. Any comments or additions?
If not, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, citizens' comments? Okay, other scheduled business discussed, except approved, denied, rejected, or take action on the following. Item A, discussion with possible action to acknowledge the lockbox arrangement requested by Hattie Truck Stop LLC for the quarterly payment.
Since it is signed by the town of Hennessy and the Hennessy Utilities Authority, it has to be on both agendas.
I make that motion to accept the knowledge of the lockbox arrangement requested by Hattie Truck Stop LLC for the quarterly payments.
Second.
Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
New business? Citizens' comments once again? Councilperson's reports, you got anything on utility, David?
I do, yes, sir, if you don't mind. Tiffany, I've had a couple of, I've had a couple of citizens, I don't wanna say complain, but they mentioned that there's a lot of streetlights burned out in town. How do we take care of that?
Well, when people call us about the streetlights, then we call OGNI. So people need to call into, they can call into the police department, or they can call into town hall. Well, I mean, they'll have to call town hall now, but, I mean, even, but, and we report it to OGNI.
Okay.
And usually within a day or two, they're out.
Okay.
But they can also call OGNI.
Yes, and, or if it's just easier for them to call OGNI, they can and just tell them where it is.
And on OGNI's website, because I did it on our street, on their website, you can go, and there's a button, you can report, like an outage or your street light out or whatever, and put your address in and submit it any time of day, and it gets to them that way. So you don't even have to call and wait, you can just go online and, and let them know.
Yeah, that's neat, that's neat. You know, some of the people that were talking to me probably aren't internet users.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm not trying to counter what you just said, I think that's great. And I've actually, I think I've used that before, I think maybe my wife did, but I hear what you're saying. Okay, thank you, that's it.
Okay, I don't have anything.
What?
No, sir.
Richard, got anything?
No, uh-uh.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
I was trying to teach you.
My goodness.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
I'm just trying to get done before Tiffany's alarm goes off. Three minutes.